We'll now call the Common Council Meeting of Tuesday, October 1st to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukneak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Chief Rosendich, would you lead us?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, please take a look at the minutes of 9/1719, please. Motion, please. Kuzikowski, like, motion to approve the minutes from 9/1719. Kerkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak.
Stain.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Item four is consideration of a resolution accepting the financial statements and the auditors' reports prepared by Baker Tilly. Bridgette, are you going to lead us in this one and then bring up the auditors?
Yes, sir. So every year, we bring forward our annual audit for Common Council review and acceptance, and we have a brief little presentation from Steve here from Baker Tilly. But just a very general overview, we had another great year in 2018. So we're in 2019 now. We're looking backwards and forwards as we work on the budget. So we are looking at 2018. We added a little over $200,000 to the general fund, fund balance, and that ended up being a total of 8.4 million for our fund balance. We ended with 15% of our unassigned fund balance per our policy. So our policy says 15 to 25%. We brought that down to the 15%. So all of that is great news, and Steve is here to give you a little more detail and go through his presentation that he handed out.
My name is Steve Henke. I'm a senior manager with Baker Tilly. Some of you look familiar. Been in front of this body before. Just as another person that's involved with our engagement team, Wendy Younger is the partner involved with the engagement. She had a prior commitment this evening, sends her regrets for not being able to be here. But what I'd like to do is just run through, I put this little seven or eight-page handout at each of your spots there, and we'll run through that very quickly this evening because I understand there's a baseball game going on that maybe we all want to take a look at and watch when we get a chance. But the objective of our audit was to express our opinion on your financial statements. When you look at your financial statements, it's almost a 90-page document. The only two pages that are ours as your auditors in there are the two pages of the opinion. There were two primary reports that were issued. One was the financial statements, and the second report was the communication report. I will briefly touch on both of those documents. Within the financial statements, as I mentioned, our opinion is in there. From a technical term, we issued an unmodified opinion. In layman's terms, it's a clean opinion. It's what you want to hear from us as your auditors. What does that mean? That means that all the information and disclosures are included within those financial statements, and they're consistent with the prior year. In 2018, there was one change. There was a new governmental accounting standards board, which sets the disclosure requirements for your financial statements. I'll refer to it as Statement Number 75. It deals with other post-employment benefits. It became effective for 2018, and as a result, the city implemented that standard. What is that standard? What happened because of that? It resulted in a restatement of the beginning net position financial statements, the top-side financial statements, the full accrual financial statements for the city overall. It requires that the liability that's outstanding for the other post-employment benefits for not only the city retiree benefit plan, but also the local retiree life insurance plan that the city participates in from the state of Wisconsin, also generates another post-employment liability. So those information is presented in the financial statements. There's a footnote that deals with the mechanics of the restatement, as well as, you know, five or six pages of additional disclosures related to the other post-employment benefits. From the communications report, this is a report that communicates any internal control or other observations that we have. Included in that report is a comment related to the internal control around the financial reporting, which is a consistent comment with prior years. And the other comments that are in there, there's a summary of the audit process. In conducting our audit, we work with management and staff, but ultimately, we report to the council. So at any point during the year, if there are questions or concerns, we're more than happy to have a conversation with you regarding those. The last piece of that report is standard disclosures that we, as your auditors, are required to make. I won't go through the 15 required disclosures. I'll just summarize them and say that they're customary and normal. With that, we'll flip to the graphs. The rest of this handout is just some charts and graphs to kind of give you some visual. Sometimes pictures worth, as the saying goes, a thousand words. So on page two, you have your general fund balance, as Bridgette mentioned a little bit ago. Your general fund balance at the end of the year was 8.4 million, really made up of three different pieces. The non-spendable piece, 2.4, that consists of either prepaid items, inventory, or long-term notes receivable. You have some deficit cash positions and other funds of the city, and the general fund has funded those. And as they relate, most of it relates to the TID districts, where they're, over time, those districts should generate the cash to repay the general fund, but at a snapshot point in time, the general fund is helping fund the bills essentially that are coming through on there. The assigned is the next year's payment in lieu of taxes coming in from the utility, and then the unassigned, 4.4 million, is what's available essentially to be, for all practical purposes, used as your cash flow. As Bridgette mentioned, you know, you have a fund balance policy. The 4.4 million is within that policy at 15%. I've been in front of this body before, so I'm anticipating a question that I always get, so I'll try to head it off. You know, how do you compare with other communities of your size? One other factor that I'd look at, if you look at your fund balance policy, is a mechanical process. So there's a threshold and a formula to come to that. But if you strictly just look at your unavailable fund balance to your operating expenses within the general fund, it's actually, the percentage is about 18.6%, so it's a little bit higher. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that you have about two months of operating expenditures, which would equate to about 16.67% operating. So your 18% is a little bit higher than that. We do a whole host of communities across the state of Wisconsin, so if we compare to some of the other similar-sized communities, their available fund balance ranges anywhere from 15 to 40%. So, you know, you folks are within, certainly within that range, and go from there.
Chief, just before you, excuse me, before we move on to the next slide, I just want to clarify on the general fund holding the deficit balances for TIF districts. Of that 2.3 million that's sitting here in non-spendable of the general fund, only $75,000, $78,000 of that is allocated to deficits from our TIF districts, and those are the brand-new districts, 14, 15, and 16, which have yet to receive any increments. So that was, that $75,000 that it's holding is a combination between those three for the startup costs, the legal fees, the attorneys, as we had to go through that creation process. So for the public, for the council, as we've, you know, been giving our annual TID report, our TIDs are very healthy. They are doing very well. This is just the startup. So this year, that's what we're holding in the general fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Moving on to page three, again, just a snapshot of the last five years of your general fund, comparing revenues and expenses. The one thing that I would point out here in the 2018 column, as Bridgette mentioned earlier, you added about $220,000 to fund balance. When you adopted your budget, you adopted a budget with a break-even strategy. Revenues would equal expenditures. So, you know, the fact that you added a couple hundred thousand dollars to the good meant that, and we'll get to that in the next couple pages, revenue was up, expenditures maybe were down. Moving to page four, again, just a pie chart on the revenues. Just from the operating revenue standpoint, you had a budget of about 22.4 million. Your actual was 23.7. The increases, if we go to page five, had real positive excess revenue, or excess over budget of revenues in building and related permits, about $850,000, and the investment market perked up in 2018, and there's a couple hundred thousand dollars of positive variance related to investments. But on page five, if you just look at the chart at the top of the page, and I'm sure you're all well aware of this, but you just look at it, the revenues have been pretty flat over the last five years. Moving on to page six, on the expenditure side, again, the chart with the different operating expenditures for the city. From a budgetary standpoint, the operating budget was about 24.3 million. The actual expenditures were about 23.6, so almost a $700,000 savings from an expenditure standpoint. All of your major operating functions, general government, public safety, et cetera, public works, all had positive expenditure variances for 2018. Again, you adopt a budget, you live within the means of the budget. On page seven is really just a snapshot of those functional expenditure categories, comparing the last five years of operations. Again, looking at the chart at the top of the page, relatively flat across the five-year time period looked at here. And then moving to the last page of the handout, page eight, just a snapshot looking at your general obligation debt and borrowing capacity. At the end of 18, you're using about 44% of your borrowing capacity. Flip it another way, you have about 56% of your borrowing capacity available, should you need to go down that path. With that, that concludes my prepared remarks. One thing I will point out, we received full cooperation from management and staff, and we certainly do appreciate that. As we conduct an audit, we certainly can, at different points in time, can be a little bit disruptive to the normal day-to-day operations, but we do appreciate the cooperation. And with that, if there are some questions, I will try to answer them.
Councilman, questions? Rich? Ken, Mike? What you, Chris?
I'm good.
No? Wow. Pretty unanimous. I don't, but again, very, very healthy report. Just Andrew, any comment?
Just continued excellent job by our financial staff, and I think one of the things, I was pointing this out to Alderman Kuzikowski, one of the things that really jumped out during the presentation is the functional areas, graphic on page seven. I mean, if you look at the consistency of those numbers over a five-year period with general government and public safety, usually you see some larger swings in public safety. I would hazard a guess in a community of our size with this type of a budget, and you can see we're between $10 and $11 million for each of those years. So that consistency jumped out at me, and that speaks to the, you know, the managers of those departments and divisions out there that really watch our budgets. And as Steve said, you know, we put together a budget. We'll be doing a lot of that in the next few weeks, and we live within our means. So I think that was a good testament to that point of those figures on page seven. Thank you, Bridgette.
And I guess the only comment I do have is on page five, where it shows the graph with the taxes and how the taxes remain flat. It's no surprise you guys hear it, I hear it all the time. Our taxes are through the roof. They keep going up. They're actually flat. People confuse home assessment as to what their taxes are going to be. Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Enjoy the game if you're going to watch. Item five is consideration of a motion. Oh, yeah, we have. Yeah, we're moving quick through this. Motion on four, please.
Gale, move to approve Resolution 12094-100119, accepting the 2018 financial statements and auditors' reports as prepared and presented by Baker Tilly, Rachel Kraus, LLP.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Now, item five, and that's consideration of a motion to approve the job description for the fire chief. Andrew?
I can take that one, or Attorney Carlos can jump in as well. But in keeping with past practice with the police and/or fire chief, we're looking for the council to formally approve the job description. Following the approval this evening, which we're hopeful of, this will go to a seven-day internal posting. I believe my memo, yeah, October 3rd through the 10th will be the internal portion of that. We'll see what kind of candidates materialize, and then the Police and Fire Commission will kind of do their thing from there. Just pointing out, you know, we didn't give you a redlined version of the job description, and we really didn't make substantive changes to it. This is myself, Judy, and then the Police and Fire Commission also took a crack to offer suggestions what really the changes amounted to, as you can see in the staff report, updating the residency language to reflect current law. We broadened the educational kind of fields of study that we would take a look at. I believe we placed an emphasis, not a requirement, an emphasis on a master's degree. And Chief put in a few references to the value the organization places on the strategic planning and accreditation process as well. So that's a summary of what was changed. I think it's turned out to be, you know, a really good job description, and we're really happy to be moving forward here.
Questions from the council concerning job description? None? Okay. Saying none, motion.
Gale, move to approve the job description for fire chief.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item six is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment to Nicole Druckey, the Parks and Rec and Forestry Commission, for a three-year term. Everybody, please take a look at that. If there's no questions, comments, motion, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I've actually worked with Nicole on the CDA for several years, so she was a member of that body. So she's an attorney, whether or not that same mayor or getting married for her is another, will remain to be seen, but she will be a welcome addition to the Parks and Rec and Forestry Commission. So with that, I'll concur with the mayor's appointment of Nicole Druckey, 2251 East Belmont Place, to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Commission, to fill a three-year term, vacancy expiring for 2021.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And again, just one last comment on that. I did call Nicole up, thanked her for stepping forward, being a leader within the city and volunteering her time and talents. Welcome addition. Anybody who's interested in a board or commission, you can come to the front desk, get an application, fill it out, whatever your interest lies. Appreciate the help. Item seven, informational. It's our summarized treasurer's report, and we have Barb with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the investment in banking for the accounts ending August 31st, 2019. Our beginning balance was $48,154,683.51. Ending balance, $36,531,236.43. Interest earned, $78,986.93. That's a decrease from beginning to end of $11,623,447.8. What pretty much made that up was, as you would expect, tax collection to be pretty low in August, it's just kind of the final dollars coming in that were postmarked in July. That was just over $10,500. We did have tax distribution going out of just over $5 million. That's because we have to make all of the taxing districts whole regardless of whether we collect it or not. And then the county reimbursed us for $703,700 for delinquencies. We did have a TIF number 12 bond payment of just over $5 million, and a TIF 16 loan payment of about $2.8 million.
Any questions on the summarized report? None? Motion.
Informational.
Oh, that's informational. That's it? All right. You're off. Item eight, holy cow, I'm really off my game here. Consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a three-year appraisal service agreement with Tyler Technologies for the full assessment of software services plus a one-time fee for the city's digital images for the periods 11/119 through 10/31.
Great, thank you. So as you've been aware, the Tyler Technologies agreement with the city for assessment services, appraisal services expires on October 31st, 2019. So the agreement that you have before you includes the change in fees for the next three years. That was direction from the council to kind of move forward with this. So we've been working with Tyler, and what's, I guess, different about this than the other years is we're looking at updating all the digital images for the city, and that would be an additional $18,000. They've agreed to do that over the first two years, so that would be an additional $9,000 in the first year, and then $9,000 for the other 50% in the second year. As you can see, down towards the bottom of the first page, I've spelled out the fees for each of the individual years. For the first year, it would be, for the appraisal assessment services, would be a $3,700 increase, or about 2%, plus the $9,000 for the digital images. Second year was another additional $3,600, or 1.9%, plus the $9,000 for the 50% of the final 50% of the digital images. And then in the third year, it'd be an additional $3,500, or 1.8% for the appraisal services. So we are recommending that you approve this as-is.
Okay, thank you, Barb.
And we have Mark Link from Tyler Technologies, if you should have any questions.
Great. Questions? Go ahead. Steve?
Mark, how often does somebody from Tyler Technologies go out into the city and look at the property that they are evaluating, assessing, and stuff like that?
Typically, that would be for during an informal or formal review. It's part of the benefit of updating the digital images. We think it will provide a better product as far as the entire revaluation goes. Going back in time, the reason that we feel that we can maintain being successful with what's called an interim market update, an office-type revaluation, is because we've made four to five full passes in the city in the last 20 years. Leading up to 2014, I should say.
Well, I don't know if you answered my question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So you've gone, your company, in four or five times in the past 20 years, you've gone through the city and looked at the properties? Because I don't mean to be argumentative here, but the biggest complaint I hear from my constituents when they get their notice of assessment and the hoops and hurdles that they have to jump through to fight their assessment is that they feel that they are, shall we say, in a court of law, they're guilty until proven innocent. They have to show proof, sometimes a lot more than they feel they need to, versus someone from your office coming out and looking at the property and saying, "Yeah, this is what it's worth." Because I hear the, "Well, you know, they're basing the value of my property because ranch houses in New Berlin are selling at this..." Well, that's New Berlin, Waukesha County. I mean, so I get a lot of disgruntled constituents who aren't happy with the way the process is done. Not so much the information that we received at a meeting recently, but just the overall process. You know, "Hey, now I have to come up with all this information to show that my house isn't worth this much," when nobody's come out to take a look at the house, and yet they come up with this value based on property values in New Berlin. So that's my statement, my comment. How can you address that?
It's going to be a three-part answer. So first of all, at the Board of Review level of appeal, by state statute, the assessor is presumed to be correct, and the burden of proof is on the property owner to prove that the assessed value is incorrect. That's the formal appeal in front of the Board of Review. When they receive their notice of assessment during the open book period, the informal conferences, it's across-the-table discussion with appraisal staff. There's no real burden of proof at that level. It's an exchange of information. You feel you can sell your home for what we have it assessed for, and if not, why? Oftentimes, it's my neighbor's value is lesser. Oftentimes, it's the condition of my property is lesser than what's being shown on the report, and we make adjustments quite frequently during that informal open book conference. So the burden is not all that much during the open book. There are no sales used outside the city of Oak Creek. All properties are valued based on Oak Creek sales.
Okay. I'm not saying that what I told you is absolute, but that's the comments I get from this. Okay. And I think you explained it because that's the process that we've tried to tell folks.
Sure.
But I think their biggest, I don't know, their biggest complaint is not seeing people coming out to look at the houses. It's all done, you know, behind a desk, behind a computer screen, and stuff like that.
Understand it. Understandable. There are certainly costs associated with going out into the field and doing interior inspections and all of those items as well. So I think the model that we've had in place here for the last six years has worked fairly well. We're averaging about 1.5% to 2% property owners during the informal open book period. That's a very low number. We've had a couple of communities, I was just telling Barb before the meeting commenced this evening. We have one community on the North Shore that waited five years. We've got a full 10% of property owners coming in. And in another community, it's 3.5% to 4% by waiting two years. So by doing these annually with this model, there's always going to be properties that have interior conditions that we're not aware of. That's going to happen whether we do a drive-by, exterior visit, or not. I believe the last time we did full interiors in the city was 1997 and 1998.
If somebody was really adamant about the condition of their house inside, you'll come out, Tyler Technologies will go out to the house, and either, "Yeah, I agree," or "I don't agree with what..."
Yeah, to my knowledge, we have never declined an offer to come out and do a visual inspection of the property.
And that was my last question. You explained it already, was part B of the complaint is, "Why are we doing this every year?" And it's been explained often, you know, the pros and cons of doing it every year versus every two or three years.
Correct.
I'm sure that we discussed this, but were there no other appraisal service companies that were interested in, in providing a proposal to us?
We did not attempt to do that. Earlier in the year, I, I had included with the monthly reports that Andrew sends out, mentioning that this was coming up and I had asked for if there was any direction on, on doing that. And I did not receive any direction to go all that route.
Okay, thank you. Mike, anything?
Please excuse my ignorance, but Barb, can you tell me exactly what actually digital imaging is going to add to?
Sure, it's recapturing a new photo of each property.
Is it a street-side picture we're adding to our website or?
That's correct, and it becomes part of the assessment database.
Yep. Chris, anything?
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. It's all pretty much been answered. Again, when it comes to the assessment, I am not an assessor by any means. Very complicated process, very important to the city. It's been explained why we go at it year to year. Also consistency. Look at what our taxes have been and worth of the city and just our finances in general. A lot of it hinges on our assessed value of everything going on. So, stick with the same company. I have no problems whatsoever to be consistent. I think it's done a very good job, and I think your testament that only one to two percent of the people are coming out says we're doing a pretty fair job. Right. Motion on eight, then.
We'll move to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a three-year appraisal services agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for full assessment and software services plus a one-time service to update the city's digital images for the period of eleven, one nineteen through ten thirty-one, twenty-two for an annual fee of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred dollars, two hundred and two thousand dollars, and one hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars respectively.
Mr. Council, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Hi.
Duke Neack.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Item nine is consideration of a resolution.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mark. Good night. Item nine is consideration of a resolution vacating and creating a new electrical easement at eighty-four thirty West Orchard Way. Mike? Oh, I'm sorry, you covering water and sewer tonight?
I, I was just, I was considering that because I didn't see anybody from the utility in the audience.
You're as close as I got tonight. You're going to have to pinch-hit for them.
That, that's fine, but the only information I have is what I just read in the council report. So, you all know as much as I do, but it's, it seems pretty clear. The, the issue is there with the Orchard Hills apartment complex under construction. We Energies will be providing service, of course. And their plan is to extend the service that currently runs along the frontage of the city property where the utility has the water reservoir. And so, in their design, they hotlined that buried cable and then discovered that it was lying across the property, not quite within the limits of the easement that was granted twenty-five years ago when, when the service was put in. And so, this is just basically cleaning this up. This is eliminating these existing easement and creating a new one that encompasses that existing line. And then they'll be free to extend that into the apartment development.
Right. Thank you, Mike. Any questions? I think Mike summed it up pretty well. Thank you. If not, motion, please.
Kirkowski, make a motion to approve resolution number one-two-zero-nine-two-dash-one-zero-zero-one-one-nine, vacating and creating a new electrical easement at eighty-four thirty West Orchard Way.
Neack, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Duke Neack.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Item ten will again be engineering. Consider a motion to suspend consideration of the installment of a no parking anytime sign on the north side of East Lake Vista Drive from Fifth Avenue to the western entrance of the parking lot.
So, at the August 5th council meeting, we had a number of traffic and safety items that were recommended for approval. And the last of which was this item here, the no parking anytime on Lake Vista Drive for that segment as described in, in the recommendation. It was decided that time to hold the item just because we did not have the full information on, on, on the impetus for the request. Took it back to staff and it turns out it was a request from DPW staff. They thought it would be logical to have no parking on one side for that segment in times when, when the, the park is, is busy, filled up with vehicles in the parking lots and along the roadway. As, as it was, as we discussed it further, it seemed like it was not really necessary. And so, basically, the, the recommendation is to, is to drop this request, at least at this time. But it was thought that very low likelihood that, that this would be an issue. It was a matter of parking on both sides and still trying to maintain two-way traffic. But we would have that issue through that, that whole segment of roadway. So, just thought that let, let's keep it the way it is. And if there are instances where it looks like, hey, we're really going to be packed up here with parking, they can at that time, police can temporarily, temporary no parking today. Just the cardboard signs, put those up on the, along the, the edge of the road that they want no parking and handle it that way. Just seems like the better way to go.
Questions, comments? Mike, anything from the fourth?
No, just, just as long as the door's open for, you know, the fourth would be the big issue. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Motion on ten.
I'm going to make a motion to suspend consideration of the installation of no parking anytime signs on the north side of East Lake Vista Drive from Fifth Avenue to the western entrance of the parking lot.
Mr. Council, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Duke Neack.
Item eleven is consideration of motion to replace the boiler system at fire station three.
So, the boiler system has, has been steadily failing. And it's been, it's been realized for, for a while now that needs to be replaced. And it's my understanding that the equipment is outdated, parts are not available. The building is just about twenty years old. So, a lot of this stuff is, is not unexpected. But at any rate, this was, this was known for a while. And in the 2019 budget process, there was some monies set aside. Basically, really, the, the bulk of what is, is needed to construct this project and finance indicates that, that money could be supplemented with building maintenance, reserve fund, monies that are available. And so, engineering, fire, facilities, maintenance, staff all work together. Got the bids out. We did receive three bids on September 20th. You see them here before you. And so, the recommendation is to go with the, the lowest responsible bidder, and that is Lee Plumbing Mechanical Contractors at forty-six thousand, seven hundred. This is a lump sum contract, so we don't expect a variation in that cost unless something, some kind of a change order or anything associated with. But they are a full twenty-five percent lower than the second lowest bidder and about thirty percent lower than the, the highest bidder. So, that is the recommendation. And we'd like to proceed and, and get the work completed before the, the major heating season coming up.
Questions?
Tom or Mike, or, you know what we pegged in last year's CIP? Variance would be any, any for that?
I was not the originator of that CIP request.
What was, what was the question, Ken? What was the question?
The, the variance, you know?
The, the thirty thousand versus the forty-seven that's going to take.
The original one came from Dick. And, and what happened, there was some more parts that failed in this whole system that required the, call it the bigger process than what he had expected.
Took everybody off guard. Dick was on vacation. Mike was sending out emails, was giving me a three-day deadline to respond if I had more money for him or not. So, we are supplementing with the building maintenance reserve fund that we've also been adding to over the last two years so that we can get this fixed and they can have heat for the winter.
Expect this to obviously be done soon?
Yeah, it's got a contract completion date of, of late November, somewhere around, I think it might be the week of, week after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we just don't hope for the early snowfall like they got in Montana. Yeah, we don't, we don't need that or the twenty below.
Any other questions? I have a question. Was equipment spec'd? Is, did everybody spec out the same equipment for a building that size? And I'm sure there's going to be some energy savings, but there's big price differences going on.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to double-check with, with Dick as he looks through those bids. I'm, I'm dealing purely with the numbers here, but he, he.
He didn't say one way or the, the other that, that, you know, anything was off in regards to the bids, at least not, not to me.
Because usually when you put out for a spec, I mean, as long as everything's falling within spec at five years, next winter, we need to add circulating pumps or something along the way. Something was left out.
Right, right.
That, that caused the price difference.
He worked real closely with the design consultant on the, on the specific equipment. And he's the one that supplied those sections to us as we, as we put together then the bid documents. So, at this point, I can just say that I assume that he was, he was happy with the specifications as they were written.
Okay, good enough for me. Thank you. Motion on eleven, then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kirkowski, make a motion to award the project to replace the boiler system at fire station number three to Lee Plumbing Mechanical Contractors at the estimated cost of forty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Neack, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Duke Neack.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Number twelve is licensing. I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody has had an opportunity to read information on the common council report. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Kirkowski, make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the October 1st, 2019 License Committee Report.
Neack, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Duke Neack.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
And item thirteen is our vendor summary report. Please take a look and direct your questions to the appropriate person, whether it's engineering or finance. Legal. Bridgette, item number one. Ninety-seven thousand dollars for the August recycling trash pickup. I'm assuming that's not a one-month amount. Because times twelve, that's over a million dollars.
No, that's a combined, Steve, so.
Okay, I just, yeah, because this is for August, so I just wanted to make sure.
And if I could note, items four, six, and seven are our annual incentive payments to Campione Liberty and Masterlak per their individual development agreement.
Questions? Motion?
We'll move to approve the September 25, 2019 Vendor's Sum Report in the amount of one million, seventy-one thousand, five hundred, forty-nine dollars, ninety-seven cents.
Mr. Council, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Hi.
Duke Neack.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Item fourteen is consideration of a motion to convene and close session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub C, consider compensation for retiring fire chief Thomas Rosendich. Also, President Gale.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, we'll move to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section nineteen point eight-five, sub one, sub C, to consider compensation for retiring fire chief Tom Rosendich.
Mr. Council, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Duke Neack.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
We will now convene and close session and return at its conclusion. We'll now reconvene into open session.
Gale moves to reconvene in open session.
Mr. Council, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Duke Neack.
And item sixteen is consideration of the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, we'll move to approve a merit payment of five thousand dollars to retiring fire chief Tom Rosendich.
Mr. Council, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Hi.
Guzekowski.
Hi.
Kirkowski.
Hi.
Duke Neack.
Hi.
Toman.
And item seventeen is consideration of a resolution of commendation to Thomas A. Rosendich, retiring fire chief. Comments? Words? Anybody?
Can I read it in the record, Danny, or not?
Oh, yeah. Go, go right ahead. But we'll start there.
Resolution one-two-zero-nine-three-one-zero-zero-one-one-nine, resolution of commendation to Thomas A. Rosendich. Whereas Thomas A. Rosendich was appointed a paid on-call firefighter on January 18th, 1979, appointed full-time firefighter June 18th, 1984, promoted to lieutenant on August 23rd, 1989, to assistant fire chief on August 3rd, 1998, to acting fire chief on April 15th, 2011, and fire chief on May 12th, 2012. And whereas Thomas A. Rosendich will be retiring from his position as fire chief effective October 4th, 2019, after forty years and eight months of dedicated fire service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department, the longest in fire department history. And whereas during his years of service, Thomas A. Rosendich has performed, performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Thomas A. Rosendich responded to and commanded major alarms using his skills in firefighting, rescue, and management admirally without hesitation. Some of the major incidents he responded to include Peter Cooper Corporation, the crash of Flight 105, the PPG explosion, the Syc Temple mass shooting, and others too numerous to mention. And whereas Thomas A. Rosendich was an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin and during his career has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas Thomas A. Rosendich conducted department training, public education, fire inspections, live fire burns, and many administrative duties to include the fire department budget. And whereas Thomas A. Rosendich represented the city as an emergency management director, leading the city in emergency preparedness and assisting the city in recovering over five hundred thousand in disaster aid. And whereas Thomas A. Rosendich proudly served as fire chief when the Oak Creek Fire Department received accreditation status, becoming the eleventh fire department in the state of Wisconsin to receive this status. And whereas Thomas A. Rosendich is a former member of the Milwaukee County Training Officers Association, serving as the president of the organization as part of his tenure and is retiring as a member of the Milwaukee County Chiefs Association, serving as the local emergency planning representative and Racine County Fire Chief Liaison. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Thomas A. Rosendich and his family in his retirement years. Be it for the resolve that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Thomas A. Rosendich, passed and adopted this first day of October, 2019.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any words?
I mean, I think each of us probably would have a lot to say, chief. Me being the newest on this, I, I can't say that it's newest in terms of working with you. Certainly, our work with the fire department through community center collaboration and events. Thank you for your service. I mean, yesterday at, at the, the little presentation there, your voice filled with emotion and emotion that, that I felt showed true love of your work. It wasn't a job. I think it was that service to your community that I'm sure all of us certainly respect and thank you for. Chief? No, brother. God bless you and thank you for all that time. God bless you, chief.
Thank you.
I got to, I got to know the chief when our boys played baseball from Oak Creek Little League.
I got to, I got to know the chief when our boys played baseball from Oak Creek Little League and we've been, I'd like to, like to think I say we've been friends since then. And when I became an alderman, it was quick that, that the chief would always keep me up to date as to what happened in my district, and I appreciated that. Even invited me over for the, the fire there on July 4th at the corner of Rossin and Howell when the bar burned down. But, you know, it's just, it's, I guess, one of the small points to show his dedication to his job is that he's been here for almost every meeting. So, I mean, he, he shows his presence here and, you know, big concern, so it's, just thanks for your work and we still owe you a breakfast.
Thanks.
Anything?
Yeah, just, just a big thank you for me, Tom. You've been a real asset to the city on the fire department. I know a lot of the people that you know on the fire department, and they have all good things to say about you. You know, I can tell you personally from the time I've been retired that I've had a chance to spend more time with my wife, my kids, my grandkids, and I wish the same for you. Happy, healthy retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief, sorry I couldn't make it yesterday. Got into town very late, but well done. Enjoy your retirement, good luck.
Chris?
Thanks, Ken. You know, I, everyone said everything, pretty much that I need to say. You know, I think though, that when I think back to how long everyone's known one another in varying degrees, I, I know that you and I being lifelong citizens of, citizens of Oak Creek, we, we know each other well and we know how much, I know how much the fire department specifically has, has helped our family in varying degrees. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart and then we'll still push for a, a fire station in six districts sometime soon.
Andrew?
Tom, we've only had three years together, a little less than three years, but two things really, really stick out to me. My generation and generations to come, they don't, they don't work in a place for 40 years. That's not a, not a thing. So that, you know, I think that really speaks to your, your commitment to the community. But something I have a growing appreciation for is that you did that with seven boys in the home. And juggling all that as, as we're learning as young parents. Judos.
Catherine, would you like to say one?
I just want to say that Chief Rosendich was my first swearing in when I became elected as city clerk, and it was days after, I believe, and I was thinking, all this pomp and circumstance, are we even going to go through this every time we have a firefighter and policeman? So I was really honored to do that, and I was very honored to read your resolution, and it has been absolutely amazing working with you. So I do hope that you really do enjoy your time with your family. Congratulations.
I'm gonna say a few words. I, I did get to speak yesterday. Again, Tom, over 40 years at the fire department, which is a city record. I kind of joked to him that he also holds the record for the most kids in the fire department. That's a record too. But Tom became a lieutenant, I just noticed this, in 1989, and that's when I moved into the neighborhood. You were ready a fireman at that point, well-established in the community. I said it yesterday, I'll say it again, you're a pillar of the community, not just as a fire chief, but within my neighborhood. It's a special neighborhood. Everybody thinks their neighborhood's special. Seven Rosendich boys, we all knew one another. Family was his center point, without a doubt. You had strengths all over. Your name is synonymous in Oak Creek. Your parents were a big part of it. They helped at the community center. This city is a better place for the Rosendiches having taken part. And again, we thank you for everything you've done. I'm glad to count you not only as my, as my fire chief, but my neighbor and also my friend. So again, I wish you a long, well-retirement. I'm, we're gonna cross paths all the time. And again, I brought up to the council, there will be a get-together on the 26th at the community center to honor Tom's career. If you guys can make it, please, you, your spouses, are more than welcome. So, Tom, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'll, I'll keep it brief. As I said yesterday.
You said yesterday.
Yes, well, this is even gonna be briefer. Because I, I'm, I'm one of 10 fire chiefs in the history of the department. And the next one is the 11th, so it's kind of symbolic that us being the 11th accredited fire department in the state, that the next chief will also be the 11th chief. So I, I hope that's a good luck number, because there, there's been a lot of good things. The, I was just carrying a football as a chief for those eight years, and the next chief, he's, he's, you know, he's got a handoff and, and there's, there's a lot of good things still come, to come. E, e, even across, if it's not even local, it's county, state, the, the whole, the whole progression that's going on in the fire service, like every other job, is changing dramatically, whether it's through technology or, or through the people and the education that's just coming out that keeps the demands. I, I, you know, I applaud the paramedics, because they're just talking about today, just one item was surgical intervention for airways. And it's like, surgical intervention, and I'm going, wow, you know, next, what's next? So it's, it's fascinating to me is the science and physics of the, of the fire service, but also the building construction and working with all the different departments. It's, it's, it's just been a fascinating job. Thank you.
Let me put your mind at ease. The department you leave behind, I don't believe in luck, the number. It's preparation meeting opportunity, and you prepared them. They'll step up for the opportunity, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, chairman, please.
Oh, motions.
Motion. I am just really anxious to watch.
We'll get you out of here soon enough, Dan. Gale, we'll move to approve resolution 12093-100119, a resolution of commendation to Thomas A. Rosendich, retiring fire chief.
Mr. Kowski, 2nd.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Again, congratulations, Chief Rosendich. And again, on behalf of every, every citizen in Oak Creek, common council, myself, congratulations. Night, everybody. That's okay.
Chief Mike Kresik, as he assumes the role, I, I know there's a lot of work, work for Mike, and I think you'll give the support to him, and he'll give the support back to you that everybody needs. So I think we're, we're not missing a beat.
Motion to adjourn?
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Dukneak, 2nd.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Good night, everybody.